Good afternoon, we are now ten minutes late for our meeting. The regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors is now called to order. Our secretary is out today and we would like to thank our Chief of our Legal Office, Mr. Ivan Nugent, for stepping in for our secretary. Will you please call the roll, Mr. Nugent?
Ms. Manzer?
Here.
Ms. Lewis? Mr. Oats?
Present.
Mr. Fierro?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Ms. Morris?
Here.
Dr. Harsfield? Ms. Wolfsey? And Ms. Robinson?
Here. If there's no objection, we'd like to approve the absence of, or excuse the absence of, Board Member Wolfsey. Seeing no objections, her absence is excused. If there's no objection to approve the agenda, is there any objection? The agenda is approved. We have seven persons who have indicated that they wish to address the board this evening. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The Chair now recognizes Andrea Flinders with AFT. The Chair recognizes Susan Stocking with DAC. Welcome, Ms. Stocking, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Dr. Bedell and members of the board. I'm here to give you an update of DAC activities in the last month. We were invited to speak at the March Principals Meeting where we reviewed the role of DAC in the district. One of the priorities for the DAC is to increase parent and community engagement across the district, and we believe that the District Advisory Committee is a prime opportunity for district parents to network, share ideas, and solve problems cooperatively. We charged the principals with identifying three to five parent leaders in their school that we could contact to notify about upcoming events, including DAC officer elections in April and upcoming parent and family empowerment education opportunities. This year, we've brought together representatives from ACE, Borderstar, Carver, we've had lots of really great participation from Central and FLA, we've had people from Garfield, Hale Cook, Hartman, and Holiday, Notts, Lincoln Prep, Melcher Northeast, and we've had awesome participation from Paseo Southeast and Wendell Phillips. We're excited to look for ways to increase participation and inclusion throughout the district. The DAC was also invited to participate in the newly-formed Parent Engagement Panel led by Community Engagement Manager Samara Crawford Herrera. This panel will meet monthly to develop the strategies, processes, and collaboration to enhance the implementation of effective family communication and district family programming. We had a very interesting conversation about the six levels of family engagement, supporting our schools with engagement, and the importance of intentional, thoughtful, specific ways for schools to effectively engage their families. This is a busy time of year for the district. I hope everyone has a chance to catch their breath this week during spring break because next week we're back at it full speed. The last general DAC meeting of this school year is April 18th, but we're already looking ahead to the work we need to do over the summer so that next school year we can hit the ground running. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Anna Ramirez, AmeriCorVista intern at Matty Rhodes, to talk about youth engagement in Northeast. Welcome, Ms. Ramirez, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I have my three-minute timer right here. Hello, everyone, my name is Anna Ramirez. As she mentioned, I am the AmeriCorVista serving at the Matty Rhodes Center, and I am working in the Community Development Department of the Matty Rhodes, also called the Northeast Alliance Together, or also NEET. So I'm here, well, first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity of letting me talk to you all today, and I'm going to talk about a project that I started December 2017, a bridging community and students at Northeast High School. So I did this focus group and research project through surveys, focus groups, where I spoke to around 200 kids, 197 to be exact. So before I start, just kind of having this in mind, just kind of want you to think right now, what were your favorite activities as a kid? You know, just have that in mind, whatever that may be. So, this project was kind of starting off like that. Community residents in October, November meetings in Northeast noticed that there was an increase in delinquent activities among youth, and they began to propose youth engagement ideas. But the thing that was missing was that they were proposing these ideas without having engaged youth of what it is that they're interested in. So as I had just asked right now, what are your ideas of what did you like to do as a kid yourself? So in some ways, that's kind of what the research project was about. I spoke to 197 kids, I was very frank with them, and just speaking to them about what their youth engagement ideas were, and it was just very exciting to see the plethora of response that I received. And the results of this project is, after speaking to around 197 kids, 95.9% of the kids said that they don't feel engaged. They feel like there isn't much for them in Northeast. And I asked them to elaborate a little bit, and they told me that there's very limited opportunities due to their lack of flexibility of time. Many students are immigrants themselves or children of immigrants, so they have work responsibility, responsibilities to their parents, to their siblings. They also mentioned that there's also very few opportunities for youth programming in Northeast. There's programming for elementary schools and middle schoolers, but high school, there seems to be kind of something missing there. They also mentioned this lack of tutoring opportunities. They mentioned that there's city year at Northeast High School, but only offered Tuesdays and Thursdays. Since they don't have this flexibility of time, it's very hard to be engaged in this way. So, it was just very much a lot of talking to the students, which was very exciting, and everything, what I handed out to you is this one-page info sheet that really summarizes that. And what has happened afterwards is I presented this project to the neighborhood associations in Northeast, and we've had a couple of community residents who have stepped up to identify ways in a grassroots fashion that we can begin to do some more work in Northeast. And I'm seeing that I have 10 seconds left, so thank you for listening, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. We'd like to welcome Aina Montgomery to talk about summer school. We welcome Dr. Marvia Jones to talk about budget matters at Holiday Montessori. Welcome, Ms. Jones, you have three minutes.
Thank you, good evening, everybody, good evening, everyone, thank you for the time. Today, I just want to talk to you a little bit about my experience with Holiday. My husband and I, we have two sons, one currently in kindergarten at Holiday, and the other who is soon to be there in the fall. I just want to let you know that what attracted us to Holiday was this, we were excited about this idea of being a part of a school where they were trying to really right some of the inequities of the past and really invest in the Montessori education at this school. And for us, we were really interested in an on-model Montessori program, and for us, that means two things. The first, there is both a primary guide as well as an assistant in every classroom, and that students have no more than three teachers between kindergarten and fifth grade. And so to us, that is very important, that we go to an on-model Montessori school, on-model Montessori school, and we urge you, as you consider resourcing and allocations, that you continue to invest and consider the investments that have already been made and the impact that they are having, and that you also allow time for those investments to bear fruit. So we appreciate your time, we appreciate your consideration as you go into these very difficult considerations, but we hope that you would just give us that time to see these investments come to fruition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We recognize Lauren Winters to talk about Holiday Montessori and update on our progress. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you, good evening to all of you. It was just shy of two years ago, I stood at your other location and requested help on behalf of Holiday staff, parents, and students. At that time, we were in dire straits with a principal who was leaving, no parent organization, classes being brought in, just a long list of exhausting things, right? So we met with you all, we debated, petitioned, met again, and we finally came to some compromises about the key issues that concern both sides. One of the best things out of the agreement was getting a principal that was in sync with our priorities and goals. She's committed to ensuring the district upheld their end of the promises. Ms. Bassbarlow has worked tirelessly to make Holiday a place students and staff can be proud of. She works along with the district to ensure all of our students are able to go through, or excuse me, all of our staff, teachers, are able to go through Montessori certification training. And in addition to receiving that same training herself, she was recently selected as a Board Member for the Association of Montessori Internationale, the USA Board of Directors. Under our current leadership, teachers included, the staff has helped Holiday maintain an attendance rate of 95% and recently received the award for excellent attendance. With the help of Montessori-trained consultants, we have been able to pinpoint our opportunity areas, and we have been working diligently to address those items. Three minutes does not allow for me to go through the list of accolades for the improvements that we've had in just that short period of time, so just know that our staff has just gotten rejuvenated, and our school has just been revitalized. While we have seen recognizable increase in many areas, including test scores, we are still well below our target. We understand the methodology used to determine how funds and resources are allocated to schools who are maybe not quite on par with the district's expectations, and we ask that the district recognize that in order for us to maintain at a minimum our current rigor, let alone continue to improve, we cannot afford to lose any staff or funding. We are aware that other schools are not experiencing the same gains that we are seeing, but please be cognizant of where we were two years ago. We ask for the board's continued support to ensure that we can sustain our upward progression at Holiday. I thank you so very much for your time and all of the work that you've put in with us for the last two years. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The Board recognizes Gloria Donato to introduce the Donato Academy Incorporated, D-A-I, to initiate a partnership. Welcome, Ms. Donato, you have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. I am Gloria Dean Donato, and I am here to introduce myself and Donato Academy to the Kansas City School Board. I am a Air Force retiree. I am a Vietnam-era vet. I taught 14 years of cosmetology at the Raytown School District at Herndon Career Center. The Donato Academy was founded, it's a 501(c)(3), and it was founded to give second chances to those who have been disenfranchised. And when I originally went for this 501(c), I had a huge target. My target now is for the individuals between the ages 17 and 24. I feel that those people are falling through the cracks. Donato Academy is a beauty academy that teaches cosmetology and barbering to the students, and we will teach them a trade where they can go and learn and take their tests with the State Board of Cosmetology on the first try. We teach them life skills, so they can also be entrepreneurs, and/or they can go and work in this profession. And I feel that the academy needs your help, and what I want really is a partnership. I would like, we'd like to move from Warrensburg, Missouri, to Kansas City, Missouri, and actually be in one of your surplus buildings. So I'm here to introduce myself and get you to look at the plan, and let's partnership. I would like to help these people to help themselves, and thank you for the time that you've given me up here.
Thank you. That concludes the public testimony for our meeting. Now on to Section 2.02, the Board Director's Report for the presentation of the evening's revenue and expenditure report and budget update. The Chair recognizes our Board Treasurer, Matthew Oats.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is our board report that's ending the month of February, so let's go ahead and hop into it. So, when we look at our revenue numbers here at the top, as we stated last meeting, or last board budget report, is that we've started to receive our local funds, and so we're pretty much now on par in all categories with the previous year, and aligned with our expectations. So if you look at our total revenue, we're at $189 million, which represents 76.57% of our expected income, and that's compared to last year where we had $183.6 million, and that's compared to 77.12% of the total, excuse me, the total revenue. Same story with our expenditures. If you look down here at our expenditures, we're at $133,253,000 this year, which is roughly 54% of our expected budget expenditures at this point. And then that's compared to $132.5 million last year, which is 55.68% of our budget. So, again, next page, we can take a look at our pie graphs, so where the money comes from. You guys see here, our local is our biggest piece of the pie. Where the money goes on the next slide, you see here that that is classroom instruction, both direct and other instruction represent over half of what we're spending here in this district. And then on our final page that we always look at, so remember, in the last month was our January report, and so that was our first time, the blue line had crossed the red line, which is what we expect. So our blue line is our revenues and red line is our expenditures. And as you see, we're sitting here with about $56 million revenue surplus at this point in the year. So, as everybody knows on the board, we are now approaching board budget seasons, so we have a responsibility to produce a board budget for the 2018-2019 school year. State statute, we need to pass one by June 30th. We're slated to vote on it at our May business meeting, and so Ms. Quinley now has a presentation over some of that planning process.
Thank you. Mr. Oats asked for us to come to you throughout the process this year and bring you pieces of the work that we're doing. We're going to start tonight with where a budget begins, looking at our revenues. Our budget team has been working on this for some months, and we want to share with you the manner in which we go about making the assumptions for revenues in the critical and key areas. We're going to be talking at a pretty high level tonight. For some of you, you may have never seen this information before. I love doing one-on-one trainings, so feel free to reach out to me if that would be helpful to you in any way. This slide is so interesting and compelling, and I would venture to say unusual to Kansas City Public Schools as compared to every other district in the state of Missouri, showing that 92.22% of our current budget for general operating funds is local revenue. Now, unlike what we just looked at with Mr. Oats, we're really only looking at what we call Funds 11, 12, and 13 internally, so the operating budgets. We have grants budgets, we have capital budgets, or bond budgets and nutrition services, but we're really looking at what we bring in and spend for running the district day-to-day on our own revenues. So that slide is really interesting. The primary sources of local revenue are these three lines: current property taxes, Proposition Sales Tax, which is a state-of-Missouri sales tax, and delinquent property taxes, those that are just paid after the year. So interesting, of that 92.22%, 70.78% comes from our current local property taxes, really showing our reliance upon our local community to run our school district. Proposition C Sales Tax, 8.94%, and delinquent taxes at just under 5%. So collectively, between these three lines of revenue, we generate almost 85% of the total operating funds to run the district day-to-day. There are a lot of numbers on this page, and we're not going to go through them all, but this is some history for you on assessed valuation. Determining what we believe the increases in assessed valuation will be, since, again, current property tax collections are the largest line of revenues, making this assumption is critical to our budget planning process. I want to guide you down to the line right above the blue line. So it says levy down there in blue. Look just above that, and you can see the percentage of change from the prior year in assessed valuation. So take your eyes back to the top in the column headers and note that 15, 16, and 17, 18 are reassessment years. We expect larger increases in reassessment years. Every other year is a reassessment year. So next year is not a reassessment year. As we work on that projection, the trend data you have here, we have much more historical trend, but what we're showing you is the 16, 17 trend, where we had a 1.70% increase in the assessed valuation during the last non-reassessment year. That's a fairly typical number, something that is probably fairly reliable. At this point, based on conversations we've had with the county around assessed valuations and what they think will happen this next year, and a recent conversation around a great uptick in the sale of automobiles, likely because of tax refunds and tax reductions that employees have seen in their sales taxes, we are getting a good growth in property tax this year, so we have that set a little higher. So at this point in time, we're looking at a 1.42% estimated increase in assessed valuation. These are all preliminary. When we get to the final budget, we may share a different number with you because we're still working it, although we're getting pretty close on these pieces. The other components that are important when you're figuring your current property tax revenue change is the operating levy, what will it be? So those last two bottom lines, let's talk about those for a second. Most districts this time of the year are trying to figure out what their levy amount will be because the Hancock Amendment calculation, as well as a Prop C rollback if they have it, which we do, will impact typically that levy, and it will move up a penny, down three pennies, back, and so that's an annual process that other districts go through. Because of Article 10, which you'll remember we've talked about a couple of times this year, we do not experience that. We know our levy will be 4.9599 next year, just like it has been these last several. The other important component is the collection rate. Who's going to pay their property taxes on time? And you can see that in 16, 17, that was 91.31%. This year, it's down a little bit. Again, we're not completely final, so that number is our estimate at this point, but we're, in order to be conservative, using that same estimate for next year as well. Proposition C revenues. Again, this is the statewide Missouri sales tax for public education. It's collected by every retailer in the state of Missouri, and regardless of where they are, Kansas City, Bunston, or the Lake of the Ozarks, they all send those revenues fully collected to the state of Missouri each month, and the state divides it back out to every school district in the state based on their weighted average daily attendance, which is a calculation we're going to look at in a minute as well. So what we want to show you here on the top line is they do pay us an amount per child, basically, weighted average daily attendance is basically a per-child count. You see the trend, you see that we've had steady increase in that. Back in '08, '09, that number actually went down, '09, '10, it went down, and now it's on a resurgence for the state. So based on the information we've received from the February and March DESI finance memos, we're projecting $1,006 per weighted average daily attendance next year, which is an increase of $7 per student. So the next line, then, is the number of students upon which we get paid. And again, that is a number higher than our student count, but it is the weighted average daily attendance, so we're going to look at that in a minute. But just take a peek across that line and notice that we are expecting to experience a decrease in the number of students that we receive this payment on next year. So while the amount is going up $7 per student, the number of students is going down by nearly 200. So we expect less revenues from this line next year than we've had. So interesting to me are the bottom two lines. You look at 15, 16, and 16, 17, at the annual increase in these lines. Those were significant revenue adds for the district at that point in time and allowed for us to do things such as improve compensation, expand programs, those kinds of things. This year and next year, we are hoping to just basically hold our own. So what used to be an additional revenue source for us annually is no longer that. State revenues. This slide is just as interesting as the first one. Of the total operating budgets, 3.88% of that comes from the state funding in various lines. So let's look at what those are. They don't add up to much, but we put basically all of them on here. The state foundation formula, that's the education foundation formula per pupil. Classroom trust fund is the portion, it's tied to the formula, but those are the funds that come to us from lottery, Proposition A over the years, and that's paid on a per-pupil amount as well. Transportation, and parents as teachers, and the high-needs funds collectively make 3.75% of our total budget. Transportation is one of the interesting ones. We'll spend roughly $15 to $16 million on transportation, and we'll get right around $2 million from the state. The rest is the burden of the local community. The state foundation formula is shown here as zero. We do earn and receive state payment. However, because we are the LEA for Kansas City, all of the charters receive their monthly revenue payments through our state foundation formula. So they get local and state funding through there, netting us to zero. All right, now this gets a little hairy, and there are a lot of numbers on here. So again, I'm going to kind of go through it as a first glance, but I'm happy to sit down and have conversation with you. I know that Erin and Veronica would be as well. So feel free to call any of us later for more on this. But the way the state determines the weighted average daily attendance, how many children are they paying us for, has several components. We start with the average student membership count. Membership counts are made twice a year, in September and January. And to be counted, you need to be on the rolls and present once during that week. And then you get counted as membership. Membership is different than enrollment, because enrollment means I'm enrolled. Membership means I showed up during the count week. They will be different numbers. The second component is the average daily attendance percentage, which gets multiplied against that count of students. So if our kids come to school 90% of the time, 95% of the time, that reduces and increases the student count we get credit for. We do not get credit if they aren't coming to school. Summer school ADA is calculated separately and added on. And then there are student group weighting factors. Those are to the right, and we're going to look at those in a second in a little more detail. And then there is a component of the formula that gives us a break should we experience a sudden or large decrease in student population or maybe attendance percentage. And I apologize, it looks like the bottom of this is rolled off of the screen, but not that one, good. In this year, if our student population were lower than the two previous, we would get to go back to those two previous and use the higher of them, and so that's a component. The let schools adjust to changing student populations. So we have 15, 16, 16, 17, where we think this year's going to land, or no, in some cases, and what we're using for next year as part of the assumption factors. So the first, the top, is our average membership. An average membership, we take that September count, we take the January count, we add them together and divide them by two, and that's how average membership is determined. You can see, we have been in a declining status the last few years, although we do project a small uptick next year. The second component, attendance percentage, this is different than the 90, 90. Attendance percentage for finance is a different calculation, and it's really about of the 1,044 minutes, what percentage of time were students present. You can see, we have experienced a decrease in that as well. We're projecting right at 90% for this year, but it could be lower because between the flu and the weather, it has been a challenge across the state of Missouri for attendance this year. Conservatively, we're using 90.44% for next year. Then we get into the three components that let us add additional student counts based on our student demographics. The first of those is free and reduced lunch. Since we are in the community eligibility program with the federal USDA, we get to claim 99.72% of our children as free and reduced, whether they are or are not. And that is a bonus when working on your funding factors. So the numbers up above, times 99.72, get you that current student count. Now let's talk a little bit about the complexities of the state threshold that's in that next column. Each year, the state sets thresholds in all three areas based on what they believe should be the average number of these populations across the state. So when we look at free and reduced lunch, we see that in 15, 16, they said all schools should have roughly 41% of their students as free and reduced lunch. We just talked about that ours officially is 99.72. So then, if you have more than 41% of your students on free and reduced lunch, there's a calculation that we go through that gives us additional credit to some percentage for the children above the 41%. for the children above the forty-one percent. So we get to add, in the year fifteen, sixteen, eighteen-hundred-and-eighteen children to our count. So those kids became worth one-plus a little more. The same thing happens in special education and ELL. Really interesting in free and reduced lunch, before I move off of that completely, you can see it has declined from forty-one to thirty-six. The current DESI recommendation and suggestions that we use in the revenue calculation models are that that will decrease to thirty-one point four-two percent across the state. That number is really interesting, and we'll see how it falls out. It was a surprise to me to see that large of a decrease in their expectation for free and reduced across the state of Missouri. In special education, you see a decline also from twelve point six down to twelve oh-six next year. And you see in the far-right column that based on our students who meet the finance definition of special education, does not make much of an addition to our counts every year. That is not indicative of the number of children who receive services. Many more children will receive service, but not meet the definition for this purpose. Then the final one we have are our non-English students, our ELL students. Sped is counted in December, and ELL is counted in October. So really interesting on ELL. We have a lot of families who come in the fall, we all know that. But then it is typical for families to come in January, and we'll have a lot number of students. If we did a count today, it would be higher than our current thirty-eight-hundred-and-seventy-three, I'm very sure. But they aren't there in October, so they don't get counted for this purpose. They will next year. You can see that this is a much smaller percentage in that state threshold, at two-point-one percent down to one-nine-four. But next year, across the state, they expect that to go up to two-point-five percent. We get a much larger add-back and increase to our weighted ADA calculation here because of our large population of ELL students. So when we take all of those numbers and put them together, we get these key components to come up with that weighted average daily attendance. And you can just see by line how they add out there and grow up to be a much larger count than our actual number of students we have in school. This is the state's way to try to provide equity in the foundation formula. It doesn't go a very long way because of the number at the bottom, the state adequacy target. That is by law in the formula definition, determined every two years, although you can see they've been changing it more frequently, which is a good thing. But every other year, the state is obligated to determine what are the top eight to twelve performing schools in the state of Missouri. Then they figure out what it costs those schools to educate their children, and they deem that to be what is necessary to educate all kids across the state. So that one really becomes a factor for us when you know we're in the thirteen-thousand-plus dollars per year, and the state is saying that that target should be somewhere around sixty-three-hundred dollars. So the calculation for state foundation goes on, and we multiply a lot of things together. There's a dollar value modifier that is given to each community, so that if you are in a higher cost of living community, you get credit. We get about an eight percent bump for our dollar value modifier. But at the end of the day, it still doesn't result in very many dollars for us from the state system. So where do we go from here with revenue? We're pretty spot-on. We know what we're going to have for the year, but we'll continue to track and monitor those right until we're ready to do the last piece of work on the local revenues. We're going to monitor our local information on TIFs and other release dollars, both for this year and what might be rolling off the registers for next year, so that we can plan. It is difficult, we've talked about this too, it's difficult to know that. There isn't anyone at the county or at the commission who's able to tell us, next year, these properties are going to roll off, and this is the revenue it's going to produce for you. So that is a bit of a shot in the dark for us at this point. We'll continue to watch what's going on at the state level and see if those changes that they make have an impact to us. And for this year, we're monitor and work on attendance percentage, because that matters, and watch next year's enrollment data pretty carefully. The other, there were three items, and these next year are going to be a lot quicker. But one of the other areas that we wanted to talk about was our zero-based budgeting effort this year. It's been a little different. It's been difficult for some, easy for others, a definite learning for those of us who've not seen our budget in the past. And it's been an opportunity for all district-wide departments to really dig in and itemize and request. And so when you zero-base budget in my world, you truly list everything under every line, and you think about it. And if I'm going to send John to this conference, is it, I'm going to throw two thousand on the page, or is it really seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars? And we want them to do that level of work and really plan their needs as they request them. Each leader was asked to align their requests to the strategic plan. That's resulted in well over eight million of requests with under four million of expected new revenues. So you know what we're doing right now. We're working on making those two come together. We're doing that using the tiered model, so that we make sure we're aligning resources to those students with greatest need, and impacting the reading and math largely as our great priority for next year. The cabinets, we are a little behind the calendar you have that says we'll be done with this by Friday, but we are very close to getting ready to where we're able to determine what the final priorities are based on all of the requests that we've gotten. This is a snapshot of, and it's just an example of a zero-based spreadsheet, coming out of the Community Relations Department. And you can see, when you look to the two columns on the far right, the next-to-last one says request for this year, and it adds up to a hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. And it does that by those specific lines below. So you can see the detail and the work that went into this. And this is where, if a week from now, we're still short of getting to where we need to be on the budget, this is where we'll come back to in these spreadsheets, and we'll help leaders determine which of those are their greatest priority and need. The last column to the far right is where they've done a really great job tying it to the strategic plan and the priorities of the district. So what is important? In this year's budget, we have some ongoing costs that we are obligated to, that we'll continue to work on. Those largely focus around benefits and compensation. We have existing CBAs and soon-to-be solidified reopeners on CBAs that have to be met in the budget. We'll be doing that. We have planned for adequate additional dollars for expected insurance cost increases. They just go up every year. And then, as you know, we are waiting, pending legislation around the retirement system for KCPSRS, and we have planned that in there as well as a first priority. Beyond that, the other priorities arrange around class size adjustments using our tiered models, and adding curriculum, supports, staff, and programs and resources that really target the learning of students, as well as some social emotional supports to support our kids as well. Questions?
This presentation has gone over a little bit, and so if we want to make our questions really quick, and we'll have a board workshop on May the second to go more in-depth, but we wanted to give you an update, so.
Just real quick, you started out, you said ninety-two point two percent is unusual. What is, what would be normal?
You would normally see somewhere in the sixty, sixty-three, sixty-five percent range at best of local support, and the rest coming from state and federal resources.
Mr. Fiero?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess, first, a comment. Great presentation. So what I took away from what you presented was, you've come up with a strong estimate of what our revenue's going to be. And then it sounds like you then went to the program managers or the directors and said, okay, looks like we're going to be at ninety percent of what we think our total tax revenues are, somewhere around there. Now, give me your proposed expenses, but fit them into this parameters. And then you stated that I think there was like maybe four or five million dollars of requests above what we have.
Right.
So I guess, what I'm interested in learning, and this could be at the next meeting or what have you, how do we determine how to address those items that go outside of what our anticipated revenue is? I guess I want to be concerned, one, we always have to be fiscally sustainable. That I agree with. But we also know in previous presentations that you've made, we do have a little bit, or more than a little bit, of safeguards. And so I guess I just want to be, I want to be concerned that we're not creating a paradigm for staff that, well, it's got to fit in this revenue total, you know. So that's what I'm concerned about.
I appreciate that. And we didn't do it that way this year, because as a new leadership team, we wanted to know what our leaders thought their priorities were, so that we can long-range plan how to address them all. We knew we were going to get more requests than we could afford to fund this year, but you're absolutely right. We have to be open to some conversation about how do we target now and make sure we sustain long-term.
And you will, I know, will come before us several more times to go through this. And as stated, you're available to meet one-on-one with your team. Thank you so much for beautiful job done of giving us an update on how our budget is coming along. Are there any ad hoc committees that wish to report this evening? I would like to share with you that the Executive Committee is looking at our governing, we have a governing committee, and so we're looking at specific policies right now. The board is working on an equity policy, and we are talking about educational equity, racial equity, and please go to Board Docs and look at that work. It's all published there. And then also look for upcoming meetings where we're having that conversation. Now for the Superintendent's Report, the next side of my business is your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we want to go and have our video highlight, which focuses on our partnership department. So we'll have Nicole Collier-White to come up.
Yes. Thank you so much for having us. Good evening, everyone. The KCPS Education Foundation is really excited to come to you today and talk about our twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen grant cycle. We opened grants last fall at the beginning of November, and we closed them January thirty-first. We had over twenty-four instructional staff actually apply for grants, and this year, we were able to award fifteen of them. The grants ranged between two-hundred-and-fifty dollars and two-thousand. And so we had a grants committee that actually reviewed the applications. We blind copied them and then passed them over to school leadership to make sure they aligned with the strategic plan. And once we decided who our fifteen top winners were, we actually surprised them in the classroom on March second. So we walked in with balloons and cupcakes and smiles. So we actually took a video, and we just wanted you to see some of the excitement that we felt on March second when we surprised our awardees. Maybe.